I'd like to welcome you all to the Planning Board hearing, meeting Thursday, June 27th, 2019. Accept a motion on the agenda?
Yes, Lou.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At 7 o'clock, we had a public hearing on the senior center, which we are immediately continuing because there was a defect in the abutter notifications and we have been advised by town council not to open the public hearing. Carrie, would you be kind of like?
I'm moved to accept the applicant's request to continue the site plan administrative review public hearing for the proposed senior center at 327 First Parish Road until August 8th, 2019 at 7:00 PM and to continue the type of action profiling with the town clerk until August 30th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that's it. Those of you who are here for the senior center will see you on the 8 o'clock at the EOC. Thank you for coming. Our next item on the agenda is a discussion for Seaside at Cituit Phase 2. Good evening.
I'm Bill Lawrence, over there. I'm here with Dave Buckley from Toll Brothers. I also have Tony Mark Manganello, wetland scientist, and Jim Asher, environmental LSP. And I'll be very brief because Dave's going to give us a brief overview. The project is moving along very well and we've had a few informal meetings with Karen and other board members and also other staff members, department heads and whatnot. So, we're here this evening because we'd like to start construction, sales and marketing, everything's going very well. And I'm going to let Dave talk here. One of the ground, and I know these other meetings we had this, but out here in the south, it's a little easier because green is phase one and yellow's phase two or so, in other words. It's easier to conceptualize.
Thank you.
Talking about, say, but. Here we are.
Evening.
Dave, just identify yourself.
Oh, I apologize. Dave Buckley, Toll Brothers. Sort of a, just an extremely brief, sort of 10,000-foot view of where we stand today in the project as, you know, we broke ground last year. We have completed a significant portion of the work on the project as a whole over this course of this last 10 months or so, I think thereabouts, Karen?
Yep.
That's about correct?
Yep, that's about correct.
Demolition of the vast majority of all of the existing roadway, all of the buildings that were on site have all been demolished and removed from the site. The remediation of the soil, which was obviously a major item during the approvals, that has been completed, as well as the vast majority of the wetland replication work. All of the roadways, asphalt paving in phase one has been completed and installed along with the sub-drain drainage work, catch basins. The water and sewer for phase one has all been completed and is operable and has been reviewed by the peer reviewing engineer in the town, DPW. Demolition, obviously, major cuts and fills that obviously occurred for the roadway and the other paving has been, the vast majority of that is completed as well. In addition to single-family lots, we are near completion on the 10 single-family lots on, just the general cleanup of those, fill and padding, as we would call it, getting ready for home construction on those lots. On the home construction side of things, we have sold approximately 40 of the 142 units within the community. We have begun construction on the four model homes right off of the Hathley entryway. Those are actually under, we're beginning to install siding right now. It's kind of exciting to see those take shape. And we have five building packs for a total of 15 units actively under construction out off of the Tilden entrance right now with a number of other building permits at different stages with the town and review and ordering. From home construction side of things, we hope to have the first residents move in to the community as early as sometime this October. To give you a sort of a brief sort of illustration, what you have in front of you, everything in green represents everything that we've been working on over the course of this last 10 months. It represents a pretty significant chunk of the project as a whole, as Bill said, stated. We're here to begin and looking to go into what we call the Phase 2, which is the area indicated in yellow on the project. It represents a significantly smaller piece of the project as a whole, a little less than half the size of the first phase, as a whole, both linear footage of road and volume of fill and cuts, tree clearing, et cetera. Actually, probably about a third the size of tree clearing on a surface area basis. That area is also, does not have any of the demolition work and remediation work that phase one possessed. So, extremely brief overview of where we stand today. Quite a bit of work has been accomplished over the course of the last 10 months and we're here looking to continue forwards with the project and we're very happy with how things have gone and everything, I think, is shaping up beautifully over there. Thank you.
Karen?
So, as the planning board was out there yesterday to do a site walk to see the status of construction, after the site walk, I did sit down with our consulting engineer and things are going well. There are still a number of items that really need to be completed. One item that I would recommend that the board have completed prior to going into phase two is that basin D needs to be kind of dug out and actually, it receives the stormwater from the phase two, so that needs to be in shape to receive the stormwater as, what they've told you is, they act as sedimentation sumps during construction, so we need to have the sedimentation sump of the basin in place prior to, prior to phase two commencing. Our consulting engineer estimates that that work would be done, based on what he saw, we saw out there yesterday, probably in the next week to week and a half. So, they are progressing with that. There is, they've stabilized a lot of the areas with this tackifier. There's no permanent grass in there yet, but the tackifier has been, being placed on the building pad areas. And as you saw on the site yesterday, there's a large stockpile in some of the areas by Tilden Road have been sprayed. They have, they were sprayed approximately three weeks ago and so they have grass growing on them. The board should decide exactly what type of growth they want for, for the other areas of site because the growth is meant as a dust control measure. We know that they've had, they have a good irrigation well out there. They said it's, you know, tested, well, they have to put a pump in there and then it has to be tested and that has to receive a certificate of compliance before they can actually draw water from that well even for the irrigation.
Can I interject? We set the pump today and we drew the water, drew the water? Yeah, drew the water and we'll be submitting that to the board of health for that, for that higher capacity well right now, shortly.
So, water, they've been using the water from the basins on site for, you know, using it for the street sweeping and using it for whatever water they need, but they won't have a water source unless they go to the hydrant identified when the water runs out unless this well gets the certificate of compliance from the board of health. So, I mean, that's all progressing very, very nicely, but, you know, they've, they've asked, you know, they know that they need water out there in the summertime to water the, to water some of the grass so it grows and to have the dust control measures. They won't be able to send water to the two Tilden basins once, because those basins, as you saw yesterday, the one on the, is practically, the bottom's practically all done. So, they're not going to send, use that as a temporary sedimentation sump anymore, I wouldn't think, because you have a nice bottom. All the outsides of the slopes are all temporary seeded. They will not be doing the final seeding until the fall because it's just, you're past the seeding time and it all needs to be fine graded as well. The area, the buffer area that we saw yes, between the residents like 119 Hathley Road and over towards the Turner Road area, that's, that's progressing and I understand they got a lot of the trees planted today. So, you saw them, we approved the staking locations, so that's progressing. Last time, when Mr. Buckley informed me that the gas, the gas is going in the shoulder of the road, but the gas company hasn't come yet, but those utilities will be progressing. I was also told that the test pit that was supposed to be done in the roadway in Hathley and Six Ave to resolve the conflict, the water line is in the roadway and the water line, the town water main is not moving, so they have to come up with a revised solution to have the drainage go across Hathley to Six Ave. The test pit was done today and they hope to, they do have some solutions that they'll be working out and applying to DPW to get a final solution. All that being said, I think they're potentially about three weeks away from what I would say having a stable site and ready to go into phase two. I would, I would recommend to the board that you, I mean, after your thoughts be said, but I would recommend that you basically, this is their, they've come to you, they've asked to go into phase two, that we maybe be able to have it so that myself and somebody else, I don't care if a member of the board, or we go on site and when these things are completed enough, we say, yes, you can go into phase two so that they don't have to come back to the board again.
So, why do you need to go into phase two if you've sold 40 and you're building 15 right now? What's, I'm trying to understand the dynamic here.
Absolutely. Well, we're here to build the entire project. We're not looking to just to do a section of the project, stop sales, stop construction, leave, come back 10 years from now. We want to build the entire community, which obviously involves infrastructure, roadways, continued sales, continued construction. We'll, we'll have 40 units built a lot quicker than most may, may understand, but it's, we'll have it built very quickly.
I'm just, I'm trying to get a sense for timing on all this. If you say you have 15 under construction, first occupancy in October, 40 sold, I would assume that if this is two-thirds, one-third, you've got 80 units to build in phase one. So, why would you move to phase two?
Well, realistically, you can't build all 80 units. You have areas that...
I get that, but I'm, you're a long way. I guess what I'm saying is you're a long way from 80 units being built, right?
Well, for, to begin, there's a number of units that won't be built into, towards the end. So, for example, across the street from our parking lot, there is several building packs, a whole building pack, there are several building packs that are going to be on hold for loam storage to be used during the life of the job. A lot of that's being dispersed on lots that are in phase two. So, that eats away at the lot count that is available for sale. It's amazing how quickly a big site becomes very little very quickly and we're going to remarkably get to that point as we proceed along. As I said, we have quite a bit of units that are sold and quite a bit is already underway. In addition, we'll continue with our sales operations as we go along. So, we're not going to sell units from a sales perspective, if, to answer your question, if we know we're going to have it reserved for several years for temporary parking lots, for temporary staging, materials or et cetera. So, we're, we're going to get to the point where everything's going to stop. So, that's why we're having an interest of continuing this project and finishing it strong and making sure it's a, it's a beautiful project and we keep rolling and get everything done and we get the project...
Yeah, I'm not questioning whether you're going to finish the project or not. I'm just questioning whether this is the time to start phase two or not.
Well...
Particularly as we roll into the summertime, right? And you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of trees that you're going to have to tear down in that particular area. So, you're kind of in the, in the heart of, you know, the recreation time for, for most of the residents around here. I'm just wondering why you need to roll into it right this minute.
I can answer that, Steve. One of the key reasons is to get the entire site stabilized during the growing season here before next winter, so that's one aspect of it. The other thing, which I think Karen has, as far as having school being out is a good thing on the Tilden Road site. They've already made during the hall periods, they're going to have daily details of that they've worked out with the police department on Tilden Road. So, get the entire site stabilized. The other thing too is from a customer standpoint, you know, it opens our other areas, like for instance in phase two, you know, there's a very bucolic area at the end of there behind, behind the school. So, you know, you don't know what customer preference is anyhow, but the whole original drive, phase one, phase two, is because at the beginning of this, during the permitting of the project, there was some doubt from a stand, town standpoint about what happens if this project isn't received and what happens if you're not going to sell it out. You want to have something that functions fully on its own. We've bypassed that. And so, the purpose to get the infrastructure at a great cost and expense, even if they're not building on it, makes an enormous amount of sense to get it stabilized because during this past winter, during some unusual climatic incidences, you know, we did have some, we did have some drainage problems, you know, being full of the limited pressure.
So, this will all be stabilized by October?
So, the idea is, Keith, Karen, Toll Brothers, so the idea is if we're able to start in three weeks, that we'll be able to get the roads paved with the binder that we just did in phase one before they close the plants. If we push it out longer, we will miss that window. That shows up in the, you know, the schedule that...
Not really talking about the roads, I'm talking about the rest of it. Are you going to have it all stabilized?
Same thing, we miss that fall window.
Planted? I mean, grass will be growing, that kind of stuff?
Same idea, yeah. So, same thing, we miss that window also stabilizing. If we wait too long, same goes, you can't get any growth in the winter. So, it's kind of predicated on that initial schedule that we, that we set out.
So, what's the, so, give me the rough schedule then. So, if you start, let's say, probably be August 1st, right? What's your schedule? How's it work?
7:15, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, our, at least, I know the rough schedule submitted, we had a couple of different weeks in what we're talking about here and I think you mentioned three weeks. Our objective, I think, looking at our schedule internally was, or at least our hopes, was to begin tree clearing the week of the 15th, so I think we're kind of thereabouts around the same sort of time period here that we're all talking. To understand, there's a couple of ancillary items that would have to happen before we clear trees on site, which I think is one thing we would ask permission to do prior to that three-week time period. That would include, you know, erosion control and a fence along Wampatuck, I believe, is one of the requirement items. Minor, minor in condition, but still something that we need to and should want to get in place first. But, once we begin the tree clearing operations itself, it's about a couple of week process to actually clear the trees and that's strictly just cutting them down and removing the logs from the site in itself. From there, we would begin removing the stumps and doing all the things that create disturbance to the soil, if you will. So, that, that's already in and of itself about a month from now. So, yes, you'd be looking at around the early August time period of actually doing all of that major de-stumping and starting to really get into the cuts and then from there, the fill operation, which would begin toward the latter part of the, very latter part of the summer where really the trucks start coming into play, which is sort of the really spur, and I met up with, you know, with the local police department and they expressed some of their concerns, which really led to the conversation of having the details there during that time period of the year, which we agreed to do during the major fill operations only. From there, we would then proceed with all the underground activities sort of concurrently with the fill, which would be the water, the sewer, the drainage, all the other infrastructure in the ground in late summer, meaning the September time period, with the fills happening in early, concurrently happening, allowing us to get everything wrapped up for the latter part of November when we would be ultimately paving. At the same time, all of the periphery areas over the course of the middle of the fall, we would be doing the basin, the loaming would be spread as well and we'd be hydroseeding and stabilizing as we have done in the current phase one process as well concurrently at the same time. And that really would allow us to get, as Keith said, the site stabilized and roadway and asphalt binder down going into the winter months. And there's a lot less work in this phase, so that's sort of why I wanted to illustrate, you know, timing wise. We get all of this green, everything in green pretty much done in 10 months, you know, a significantly lower portion, we're looking at, you know, five months for a significantly lower portion, six months. So, that's, we're willing to hit it up and we have less complexity because there's no remediation, no demolition. It's a lot easier phase, a little piece of this project. So, we, we're well positioned to get all of this done and stabilize and in place this season.
Well, six months would take you to December, through December.
Five months. Sorry, can't count.
So, it's five months? You'll, in other words...
November is a time period...
If what you're trying to do is accomplish stabilization, then you're going to be able to do that?
Absolutely, yes.
So that we won't have gone through this and have to wait through the whole winter?
That is absolutely...
And have all the runoff and all those problems.
Absolutely. You know, and all the basins, as we, as we just mentioned, all the basins that, the vast majority of phase one drains in the basins in phase two and those are already in place. So, we'd be able to immediately start draining items into that phase, both from a permanent and even a temporary situation.
So, the one basin, which one is D?
D is...
I can't read this.
It's up here, Steve.
Keith, Keith can show you on the, on the big map, too.
On the map.
That one's basin D.
So, that basin is got, I would say, half of it is roughed in. All the major outlet structure is already completed, so there's, there's a pile of...
We were out there, there's no sand or nothing, none of the bottom's been mucked out or anything right there.
It's about 50% done.
Yeah. I would say, Brian and Karen's estimate about a week and a half is actually, is very accurate. We talked to them today. That's a very reasonable time period to have that, that completed as we just discussed.
But you wouldn't use it as a construction basin, though?
Yeah.
You would?
Yeah, we absolutely would, yes.
It would be a sedimentation sump.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
There would be what?
It would be the sedimentation sump.
Yeah.
Remember that they are overexplanating...
So, they're, so they're not going to put the Title V stand in?
No. The Title V stand would go in when they're not using it as a sump anymore.
So, what are they doing to it now?
They just got to finish, make it and form it and...
They have to finish forming it, yeah.
Yeah, and then, yeah, then you hide, you seed your slopes and your top of your berm. So, you get it stabilized and then from there we can, you go in there and it's going to get all the muck during construction and you go back at the, towards the end of the project.
So, will everything from phase two go there?
Um, the vast majority of it would. There is a bit of a tail, you show me, Keith.
This basin also, that's, say it?
Yeah.
So, that's actually the only basin once we...
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
But none of the, none of the, the stuff in green? Would anything go to the lower basins by Tilden? Any of that running over?
Anything in phase one go?
Phase two?
Two.
No, we couldn't, like you said, we wouldn't be using these basins until they finalize and now...
That's what I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, make sure.
Yeah. This basin obviously that will be used for quite a bit, same thing, like Karen just mentioned how we use this, this also would be used for temporary sedimentation period of state.
So, the topography of phase two only feeds those two basins? Is that right?
Yes.
Right?
They'll have to find a way to get the water to those two basins. I mean, as you saw out there, they have a whole system of elaborate pumps so that they're...
Do it the same way.
They'll have to do pumps the same way because they're not releasing any of the water. They are using that water on site because they don't have...
Well, that's what we want to make sure happens.
Right. That's what we want to make sure happens.
Trying to be efficient, using, using, using the resources that we have on hand.
We'll need another pump system like you saw out there with two and now we'll need another one for phase two to pump to those bases.
Worked really well so far.
Yeah. The other thing that I think David was narrating, we forgot to say, is just as in phase one, in the, in the unlikely event that there isn't enough pump water, basin water, they'll use water trucks just like they did with that control in the first place.
Yeah, prepared to bring in off-site water.
Okay, and there's, there's no changes to what, all your requirements here, right? You're not asking for any changes to that? It's just to move into phase two? And what gets left in phase two for the neighbors? Is there a buffer?
Uh, there's a...
Is it, if I remember right, this is mostly fill, right? Is there a lot of fill here?
Only in the, the backside is, yeah, right in the middle. The backside's mostly upgrade over in Ermine. There's not much topographic changes happening back there. Yeah.
The majority of the fill is right in the...
Right in the dead center there.
What happens along the neighborhood? No, the neighborhood. What happens there? Does that get cleared all the way to the...
No, no, there's, so, I can...
I can show you if you're talking... So, the, the limit of disturbance is, this, this bit along this back edge, this is, this stays, this is limited disturbance is recessed into property lines, so the existing vegetation stays along.
Right.
The vast majority is property line and so bulges in here and there. There's a big bulge that kind of comes in here, although it's hard to tell it's a bit faded, so I apologize. This is going to get some, you guys will print. This is a caused vegetation on the Wampatuck school site. So, the other bit that stays along the edge here and in here, of course, this is all the normal pool and this stays all in touch anyways. All these periphery areas though, there is a pretty comprehensive landscape plan and buffer planting that has happened in this area, part of the landscape plan as well.
Right, so that wouldn't be done till earliest next spring?
So, that gets cleared and then landscaped?
Correct.
Yeah. It wouldn't be done till next year? It wouldn't be done till next year, no. I mean, the buffer planting would not be done till next year because, I mean, if you're not even getting, you know, potentially binder down till December, late November, early December, you wouldn't be doing the planting at that time of year.
We can get the planting in before then. We could, we could easily get the, the periphery of those areas rough graded and get a, a landscape buffer in if need be on those areas. Like I said, we have a vested interest of working with the, with the local abutters and, and making sure, we want to be good neighbors. We've tried to do so with other, other abutters in the areas. We want, we want to be good neighbors. That's how we look at it whenever possible.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong. I was under the impression phase two was almost three years out.
Uh...
Maybe I was...
Yeah, no. Yeah, no, our, our intention...
It was a worst case, you know?
Yeah, maybe worst case, yeah, no. I mean, our intention always is to come into a community and finish the infrastructure. We may have presented a worst-case scenario of what if the sky falls and the world economy comes to an end, but, you know, we're thankful to be in the position, as I know the board expressed severe concern, that given the size of the project, we would half-finish it and walk away. I mean, I think maybe even that was sort of positioned to us, as Bill stated prior. We're, we're in the position to be here today saying that's thankfully not the case and we're, we're, we're positioned to finish it out in its entirety and get everything planted and, you know, really complete this community as it should be and to the standards that we want it to be as well.
When would you expect that to happen? To be finished?
When you say finish, do you mean absolutely every house built?
Let's say 90%, 80%, 95%, yeah, whatever it is.
I don't want to jinx myself.
I'm just asking you what your question is.
It's all sales dependent, of course. You know, we're easily looking at building 50 homes in a year, very easily right now. We get communities similar the size, build, doing even more than that. We've sold in, what?
So, you're probably three years?
Seven, eight, seven months, sold 14 homes, so...
Right.
We're, yeah, it's, it's...
So, you're probably three years from completion?
Maybe total construction... Maybe total construction. Yeah, I'd say thereabouts. I mean, I think we originally thought the whole project in its entirety was going to be more like, I think, five or six originally, yeah, five years originally.
Three things I guess mentioned briefly, just bring Luke. The surety for the entire site, including Phase 2, was posted before the project began, so that was taken care of before we began. The second thing is under Condition 63, prior to anything, temporary change in the construction fencing will go up, Wamptuck around the entire area. And the other thing is, instead of during construction, there's a gate at Ermine Street for fire department access, you were going to do that right away, weren't you?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that would be the intention of just getting it in place.
Those are the two things, because one of the things we would like to leave tonight, because prior to do anything, is to get the perimeter fencing and the sedimentation control, because under Condition 63 and 64, that's required, we like to start that right away to get going, so by the time we get the tree cutting, it's done and it's in place.
Most of the erosion control for Phase 2 is already in.
The chain link fence will be a little bit-
The chain link fence will take a while, yeah, the chain link fence will take time to get in.
And to be clear, there might be some minor, you know, minor, if you're putting a tree like fence to the middle of the woods, you may have to cut something anyway to do that as well, though.
Built, do you have any?
No, no.
And most of it. Good?
Um, what, I guess, when would you expect that, I guess, the full site would be like stabilized to a degree that is actually, you know, like we did the sidewalk yesterday, and obviously you've done some hydroseeding and like tack fire erosion kind of materials been sprayed, but, I mean, I'm in this trade, and right now it's really hard to get seed to germinate, you know, it's not irrigated, so I'm just curious.
So for the temporarys, we actually utilize a company called Hydrograss, they actually use specialized seed blends that remarkably so actually germinate very, very well during even warm months and require very, very little water. Those aren't our major stabilized sort of periphery areas. We're going to be in a process of continuously applying Tacify, a pulp, if you noticed, you may have noticed on the single-family lots, we actually use a mixture of blown hay or straw with Tacifier, and actually the seed in the mix as well. That's a continuous process that we apply throughout construction to help keep areas stabilized, because as we're moving even into home construction, as we may have mentioned, as you may have caught, we have even Tacified and temporarily stabilized with seed, home lots, just for the purpose of getting a bit more stabilization, even though we're going to come in there, those a couple of months, and dig it up for a foundation, that's a continuous process that we do on all of our sites, it's just continuous maintenance that we do to, for our own, I guess you can say sanity, but it helps to manage the site better. So I guess, on your question, as it relates to Phase 1, you're going to see, you're already seeing areas that are becoming stabilized, we're continuously applying more seed throughout the duration of project. As areas become disturbed, we seed them. As we hit into the fall, we're going to start having lots that are going to be completed. So on these, around the immediate areas, the buildings themselves, the fronts, the sides, a bit off the rear, those areas get sodded and planted with sod. So the vast majority of the areas right near the building packs themselves get sodded as we get to the completion of the site. So October, November, sod's going down on those completed units, so we may have half a dozen building packs that are fully stabilized, the entire building pack over near the entryway of Hadley, the model home, that gets sodded as well, and, you know, a full elaborative landscape plan gets installed there. So there's a lot of landscaping that happens over the course of this season as well in select locations, and we'll continue to make the progress of that as well.
Right, so I guess most important is, for me, is to hear that you say there's a certain amount of interim stabilization that's temporary as a mitigation measure, because I do think it's a little, it's a little bit pie in the sky to think like, everything will be, in my opinion, fully stabilized to a permanent degree, so just by following the protocol that it's here, but to hear that you're doing the interim work, I guess, is, that's good, because the only thing I worry about, too, is, obviously this spring, we had a lot of stormwater issues and working in mud, but now, we don't know what could happen the next couple of months, and it could be as dry as a bone, and obviously what we worry about is dust and sediments going everywhere.
Yeah, we actually, and as Karen mentioned, we, I gave more details on, so we have several wells on site that, one of which has some pretty good yield, the other one where we actually just fracked it yesterday, today, and we're waiting the results of the, what we're going to get out of that, but we have a pretty decent well, one right now, that's, that we have a pump set in place, we should have that up and running and tested for the Board of Health to sign off and close out, and we'll be using that. We actually are going to be getting a pretty extensive temporary irrigation system for the entire community, we have a two-inch pipe going around the periphery, two-wire system doing the whole area, so we actually have a lot of that, that'll be going into the works actually very shortly as well, to address your point there. And then from there, we'll be, as we finish the areas completely, you know, with the complete finished landscape, like around the homes themselves, when there's not lulls driving over and heads actually get set, those get tied into a pretty elaborate landscape irrigation plan designed by design, and they'll get tied into the wells, of course, as well. And those will go online in sections as we complete them.
Right. Okay, I guess the last question I had was about the 60-foot buffer, that's part of the bylaw, so there's obviously areas, and I mean, we knew this, but there's areas that I think the bylaw said it had to be maintained in a natural or landscaped condition was part of the permit, so, or the conditions for the permit. So in the areas where it's not maintained in a natural condition, I was, I guess I was a little surprised, and, I mean, it's always good to see it on the boots on the ground, but the areas where a lot of fill was brought in, you know, there's some spaces where significant height above abutting residences, and there's kind of, you know, a cleared area that's to be landscaped. I was just wondering, as you go along finishing up Phase 1 landscaping and into Phase 2, how are you going to, in those cleared areas, augment that buffer zone and the landscape plan?
Well, so there is a pretty elaborate landscape tree and shrub plan that's part of the approved set, which we'll be installing every single one on that plan as we roll into the different sections, so obviously, we would highlight any of the buffer areas as we already started to do on the back of Loa San, Loa San, which is the cul-de-sac to the left down here, if you will. In addition, I believe there's a requirement that, at the discretion of the town planner or planning board, there's 50 additional trees that can be placed in, it's a supplement even that plan in addition. And in addition to that, we have, in a few instances, already gone above and beyond that 50, or not, I should say, not counted that 50, but gone above and beyond the plan to help further screen some local abutters in the area. Just, once again, we want to be good neighbors, if there's something that we see you could use extra buffer planting, we're going to do it, it works in everyone's benefit. And so those, that's a case-by-case situation, which I work collaboratively with, we'd work collaboratively with Karen.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's kind of what I was looking at here, too, is that it's not going to be something that's, if there's an immediate concern from an abut her, it's not going to be something that's like, oh, well, that's farther down in Phase 2, we're not going to do that till, you know, we get to this point.
We have a vested interest in getting stuff in the ground and getting stuff stabilized, the quicker we get trees in the ground, the quicker they can start growing and helping to serve the look of the community as well. So we, I, we always look at it that our interests are very much tied to the interests of the community, the better it looks for the neighbors, the better it looks for us, the better it helps sales, the better, it just helps everybody. So that's always the way, we've always looked at the approach, we're, from a marketing perspective, so to answer your question, yes, we'd absolutely be working and have worked so far with Karen and any of the butters in the area.
Okay, and then lastly, just, is the Phase 2, just like eyeballing the plan, I mean, a big, one of the big abutters is Wamptuck School, and, you know, if you're starting over the summer, that school's not in session, but in general, I just get the, kind of the feel that a lot of the work is kind of in closer setback proximity to a lot of the residences, and given that it's summertime and people are outdoors recreating more, using their yards and homes outdoors, I guess, just, how do you intend to deal with, I guess, like kind of the noise and things of that nature that might be a little bit more apparent if you're starting this phase in the midsummer?
Well, I mean, once again, we're talking, even in the best-case rose-colored glasses scenario, we'd be still engaged in tree clearing even as early as early August, and we're a hop, skip, and a jump of taking away some stumps. That early process of cutting down trees, taking away stumps, it's only a few pieces of equipment that are moving in that area before you really can start rolling into the site and actually doing all the stuff that, to your point, people may not like to see during those time periods. You're then already into that late August time period already, before you know it, you know, school's in session again, and the weather's turning cold again, time sneaks up on you really quick in this, as you know in this business, but there's quite a bit of work that happens. It doesn't move that quick at the beginning, and there's a lot that happens that's slow at the beginning, which is that tree clearing initial destumping process. So, now that answers the question.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty, and you, another one would be, I guess, once we're into the fall and school is in session, and we find that it's kind of creating some sort of a nuisance with the school or something, how might that be dealt with?
I, I can't answer the question until I know what the particular concern is, to be candid with you. I mean, as we've expressed, our goal is to get the, we'd be having the tree clearing done before school's even in session, and then from there, it's just a matter of, you know, hearing various different concerns as they come up and doing what we can to address them. You know, like, for example, one concern was expressed to us in advance was a concern of, you know, that entryway and during the fill operations, the heavy traffic going in there. So that was a concern brought to us, so we sat and we collaboratively worked with the local police department, and we suggested, okay, let's have a detail there daily during the fill operation, which is a couple, maybe a couple of months, and that, you know, issues such as that. I mean, we want to work with the various different town parties to try to, to try to be good neighbors during the process.
If I can just add that, they've had several meetings with the police department, they will be having details, and if you remember, your conditions do not allow truck traffic to go further down by Wamptuck School. Everything has to come, you know, when it's, this part of the site is going to be coming Tilden into that site, so trucks should not be going by the school.
Yes, thank you, Karen.
And we are diligent about monitoring the trucks. I mean, we get calls, we observe them when we're out doing site visits, and we'll call down and we'll ask.
Rebecca, do you have anything?
I do have one or two questions. When you clear the second phase, are you going to start, like, how are you going to do it? This direction or that direction, or does it just, you just do it once?
Hard to answer, I mean, I would be putting the words in the mouth of my tree clearer, because they, they, it's usually in a, what they've done in the past is a two-step process, so first they bring a specialized piece of equipment in there, which looks like a giant tree chipper on steroids mounted to a skid excavator arm, which sort of shreds all the smaller shrub material, and then they bring in a device that's sort of, I'm trying to describe it to you, but it grabs the taller trees and then cuts them down and lays them down, and that happens sort of like week number two, and generally they'd move from, I'm guessing they're going to move from in here and into the site, as a guess, just as a guess.
Yeah, that's their only access, so they-
Yeah, that would be most logical thing, I just don't know.
Yeah, the only access point is from where it-
Yeah, sorry, you can't see.
Yeah, so then half that would soon have to stop there, they can't, you know, material out, so, because they can't use Ermine, so.
I just would like to add that I have got a proposal from our consulting engineer, so our consulting engineer, I've got a proposal, I'm working on getting the signed contract back in the office for the town administrator to sign, and then I will be asking Toll Brothers for the money for the construction observation services, but he will, our construction observation will, they'll be there pretty much full-time for the first few weeks. But you also remember, they are doing construction on Phase 1, so they will be overlapping the inspections as much as possible. They've basically figured first two weeks practically full-time, then three days a week, and they'll still be doing the inspections over in Phase 1, so they are there, they're their part of every day.
All right, I think, um-
Public comment?
Okay.
Public comment?
Public comment?
I guess not.
All right, we had discussed, you want to start Phase 2, I understand why, and there's sort of a consensus that three weeks for now? Karen?
Yeah, I think there's a, pretty much, I mean, that will get basin D done, that should get a source of water, and I would like, you know, the test, I would like a plan for action for the drainage crossing Hadley Road. I think that's-
Yeah, you probably have that early next week.
It sounds like all that can be done within this timeframe. Those are your three important things, and as long as they keep watering what they put down, the seed should emerge within three weeks.
Wasn't there also some stabilization that still had to be done in Phase 1? I thought when we were out there, there were areas that hadn't been stabilized yet.
I have it scheduled for the week after the fourth, I basically have it scheduled every week, coming out as we progress, they come out, so they'll be out relatively week after the fourth.
Yeah, so I would add that as a fourth item, basically, to say that you want to make sure Phase 1's getting stabilized.
Three weeks, so probably be out two more times, I haven't seen more areas in Tacifying.
Bearing in mind, areas near the building lots, obviously, we're actively digging for foundations.
Yeah, I'm not talking about where you're building, yeah.
All right, I think, as Karen had said at the onset, that we would have a site visit probably some, probably the week of the 22nd, Karen?
Whatever, three weeks.
Three weeks is the 19th.
All right, so-
18, excuse me.
So we'd have a site visit then, the week of the 15th?
Right, so-
Then if everything is as it should be, then how does the board feel about allowing the town planner to have that move into Phase 2 without having to come back here? Starting on the week of the 22nd of July?
Well, I for one would be okay with it, I would want to, I want to make sure we articulate what's going to happen in Phase 2 that we've just talked about, so I would want to make sure that the, you know, obviously the soil erosion stuff has to get installed almost before anything gets started, right?
Yeah, so I think that would be the only request I would have prior to that three-week period, is if we could get the fencing in place and the, any of the other ancillary items.
Is that around the school?
Uh, on the, it's, I believe the language is on the buff, how is it worded, on the buffer of the Wamptuck School, there's like seven, eight hundred feet of it, give or take.
To speak to that for one second, though, Steve. I mean, tomorrow, that fencing should be, that's an attractive nuisance with kids out of school, that should be done, and the police have actually commented on that, in other words, that fencing should be done tomorrow.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I know where it is, and then the second thing is, if you install it before you do all this tree removal and all of that, the question is, are you going to damage it while you're doing it?
No, no, because for the, a good portion of it, the fencing, we would most likely be putting inwards of the tree clearing, if you will, area, because there's a buffer, so our property line goes beyond that, so we would be targeting either just inwards of it, and if, whatever reason, our tree clear-
So you don't expect, you don't expect to have a tree clear come up to the fence? There's going to be a fair buffer between that and the fence?
It'd be enough for them to-
How does the fence go in?
We're talking about driving the fence, we have issues, if you use the feed, they always get knocked over, always standing up, so we're talking about driving the fence post in.
Okay, but there's enough sort of straight clear area, you can do that kind of thing? Or do you have to clear?
We may have to clear a couple of trees, or a couple of small brushes or shrubs, or cut a little path to actually get, to weed that fence into the, through the woods, because it's through the woods.
Karen, I could walk that line with you, once we could, the tree cutter.
Yeah, we absolutely could do that.
Feel better if we did that.
I don't have a problem with you putting the fence up tomorrow, if you have been told that this is becoming a nuisance.
Well, they are getting kids on the other part of the site, too, I mean, so, but they are trespassing.
We're not fencing. We're not fencing the whole site, right?
They are trespassing. They are trespassing.
So the fence for Phase Two goes from where to where?
I can probably show you up here, twelve, seven, hundred, eight hundred feet, and basically running from, basically from here to here.
Over there.
All right, out here is, I'm kind of, this property, kind of basically a school property, but our property line is above here, and then out to the property area is the one that's down here. There's the button.
So it's essentially the school property line?
Exactly.
Okay. I'd want to know that we had the police details set up for the fill trucks, right?
They have, they have, the police have told them they have to have the details.
And are we going to avoid school drop-off and pickup times?
That's, you have, I mean, that was not, that wasn't put in this, this project's conditions. But if you impose that for hauling of fill or, you know, materials, then, I mean.
I guess I would ask the police whether that makes sense or not, right?
I think the whole discussion I had with the police department, I don't want to put words in their mouth, was, they felt that, once again, at the risk of putting words in other people's mouths, they seemed to express to us in person that having a detail at this one location sort of resolved their concerns with the activity that would happen at this point, so, not to put words in their mouth, but.
Well, I would ask them about the school, whether it screws up the school delivery stuff, right?
And bearing in mind, trucks don't go past the school.
Right.
I know, but everybody comes up that way.
Right, they do. Okay.
And then I would want to make sure that by the end of November, Phase Two is stabilized, right? Even if it's temporary stabilization, that the commitment is that we'll stabilize it so when we go into the winter, we don't have a lot of, you know, raw slopes and all of that to wash away when the spring comes. Yeah, and my only caveat in all of that is, it's not an acceptable explanation to say, oh, we had a lot of, a lot of rain in the spring to manage the stormwater. So you're, you're on the hook for managing the stormwater in Phase Two. So it's not, it doesn't end up, particularly end up in the neighborhoods, right?
Understood, and we have, as some of the members have seen, Karen has seen, we have implemented some, some pretty serious measures to make sure that we're, perhaps swing the pendulum hard to make sure we are covered.
All right, so we'll have a site walk, Karen, third week, and then if everything goes the way we hope it will go, then they can start the following week, Phase Two.
Okay.
The other thing, though, just to clarify, as far as putting up the fencing and the gated ermine.
You can do that tomorrow.
In erosion control.
Yes.
Well, providing that the Conservation Commission allows them to finish the erosion controls. I mean, I think, I mean, there's an order of conditions here, too, that we have to be mindful of, too.
Well, you can't put the fence up tomorrow until you've done the walkthrough with it, right? You're going to do that?
And we don't have it contracted yet, so we're clear, we're doing that anyways.
Nobody's not, nobody's out there tomorrow.
We say tomorrow, but nothing's happening tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't have it contracted yet.
So, are we all set?
It's qualitative tomorrow.
I think we're proceeding out of very good, we're getting it under control.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to say something? I'll forever hold the peace until the next time. Yes. Excuse me, you have to, please identify yourself.
Captain.
Yep. It's been the.
I didn't hear what she said.
Turtles. The turtles. The turtles have been swept and there were none.
Conservation was out there.
Yeah, they were out there, fifty-nine hours' worth.
Yeah. We have a report, we have a report, it was really part of the Conservation Commission's order of conditions, but we were provided a copy of the report this afternoon, and they did all the hours that they were required to do looking for turtles.
And the turtle fences are up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, Dave, could we have your representative say something, please?
Like, I'm Mark Ming and Ella from Ellis, Environmental Consultants. My firm did the work, so I was personally involved in it, and I know that the work was completed. A summary report was submitted to Natural Heritage, was submitted to, I believe, this board, to CONCOM, and to all the other listed parties.
Okay.
It was done.
It was done.
And no turtles?
No turtles.
Yes.
Okay.
One other question, has, has the final remediation been filed with the DEP?
No.
Jim?
We, I have a draft, GM, Agent GCI Consultants, LSP for the project. We have a status report for the most recent work we've done, including the reinstillations, that information is going to be provided to the DEP and to the board. It's dated early July, I believe, and then the final closure of the permanent solution statement. We haven't kept a date for that, but it can occur at any time after that, when completion of the forest has been done.
So this report that you're talking about will be filed with the DEP in the next week?
Not within the next week, in July.
In July?
Yeah, I've got the draft. I think the due date is mid-July, because they're doing it six-month intervals, they perform by January, so it's due in July, and that will document all of the work that's been done to date.
Yep.
Because that due date is in July, and we're going to put all of the information about soil sampling, groundwater sampling that's been conducted, but that essentially wraps up the environmental investigation work, the remediation work that we've done. So the next step is to file, to file a permanent solution statement, which essentially repeats the same information again. We don't have a particular date for that report, essentially it can come at any minute of time.
So let's, can we get your report, your first report filed before we start Phase Two?
Does our consulting engineer get to review, get to look at it before you file it, or how does this process work?
I don't remember. I don't think he reviewed it before it was filed.
Okay.
We have provided with him with the data.
Right, right, right. You've been, I mean, yes, you've been providing the data all along, yes.
Yeah, so essentially, he has commented on his comfort level with the information as we've drawn, so the report doesn't include anything new, but I don't think there's a review process by him before this.
So, I repeat the question, can we file it before we start Phase Two?
What were the dates?
Well, we're, we're going to do an inspection the week of the 15th, right? So, so you'll, you'll file it by then?
Yeah.
Okay. Add that to the precondition checklist.
Okay. Okay, are we all set?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What's going to be a race?
Race.
Race?
Yeah, to get that thing cleared and stabilized by the end of November.
By the end of November. Okay, our next item at eight o'clock is a Form A. Who's here for that?
Nobody.
We lost Karen, too.
Somebody, oh, somebody is here. Ah-ha, ah-ha. The gentleman's farm.
Did I left your hat?
Is that ours?
I don't know.
Did I left them there?
It's ours.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Okay. This is from Morse Engineering.
What's that?
But it's a Form A. What can I say?
Well, it's the precursor for the next.
I don't know, we can't deny it. It is what it is.
We don't have frontage.
Yes, we do.
What are these lots?
That is.
Best to get your square footage or fireman.
Okay. All right, we have a form, a, and a four forty, three to four sixty, Chief Justice Cushion Highway, accessory map, forty-seven dash two dash twenty-six A through twenty-six J. Owner, Seven H Trust, and the applicant is David McCready.
So, my name's Jeff Assett, I'm here on behalf of David McCready. He's the applicant, he has a purchase and sale agreement. It's a Form A, A and R subdivision to redivide the property. Currently, the property's made up, made up of ten lots, and we're rediving it to eight lots. It's a Form A plan because each of the lots has a required frontage width and area. Each of the lots actually has two times the land area that allows them to put two boxes on the properties, or two family homes. The property has tails, tails are allowed under certain regulations. In this case, we're using the tails to create open space and understrepped buffers up the rear of the project. The intent of the project is to make a cluster development. So there's a mandatory fifty for the noticeary buffer along three A, and out back we're using the tails. We're going to put a friction on the tails which go back and then come back this way, and that'll be a noticeary buffer to the butters in the rear, as well as several in the direction towards the reservoir. The lots will be serviced by common driveways. We have filed a common driveway special permit with you, and as well as a stormwater requirement, which we've heard of those. Again, it's A and R subdivision because lots have required frontage width.
I always had the impression that there was a hundred-foot buffer along Route Three A.
There is, it's a hundred-foot setback for the, the fifty-foot noticeary.
Did you repeat that?
Yeah, the, the setback to three A, it's a one-hundred-foot building setback and a fifty-foot noticeary, other than your access track.
Thank you. Okay. All right, questions from the board? Pretty straightforward.
Who owns this property?
It's owned by the Seven H Trust.
I'm sorry?
Seven H Trust.
And who are they?
Who are they? Are they the ones asking for this?
So, they currently own the property. The applicant, McCready, has an agreement with purchase contingent on the property. It's homeworking for David McCready. I have him on my work, he's the property owner. They did write a letter authorizing the filing of this.
Yes, they did. Okay.
So why are we creating rattails?
Because they're allowed to get them.
I'm just curious.
So, by doing.
Since you don't need the area, you said, why are you creating a rattail? Why not just create a open space lot?
So we do need the area, which one of the lots has the eighty thousand, because it's the intent of two-family home zone, two times a land area. We could, we could spread this out a bit. We could end up with a house down here, which, you have a storm wall, one of utter, and then tactactored onto. So they wanted to keep it a cluster, to help the hell away from that, that specific area.
All right, they have the frontage, they have the access, they have the square footage, whether we like it or not. Would you care to read that, please?
Is there a note on the property indicating that the planning board is not endorsing this one way or the other? Is it developable?
We always stamp it.
It'll be stamped, planning board endorsement is not, you know, the, the stamp will go on there and.
Be sure that's clear.
That, you know, they will be coming to you, we're scheduled, we're trying to get, schedule a public hearing date for the common driveways, et cetera. Has access and frontage.
I move to do as approval not required, a plan of land in the town of Citron, Mass. Four-four-three dash four-six-one, Chief Justice Cushion Highway, appeared by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., applicant David McCready, and owner Seven H Trust, dated four-twenty-four nineteen, with a revision date of six-ten nineteen. As the division of land showed on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision of land, because it shows every lot on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required under the Citron zoning bylaw on the public way of Chief, Chief Justice Cushion Highway, with the planning board stamp added, that planning board endorsement of the plan is not a determination as to the conformance with zoning regulations.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Voted.
Yeah, we're all opposed.
I know you are.
We won't have that plan ready till Monday.
We need to approve minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of a hundred and seventy-five dollars to Murphy, Hess, Truman, and Lahane, LLP, for the review of condo documents for six McDonald Terrace, forty-two dollars and thirty-six cents to WB Mason for office supplies, for thirty-nine dollars and ten cents to Brad Washburn for mileage reimbursement, for seven dollars and nineteen cents to WB Mason for office supplies, for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars to Merrill Corporation for inspections at Deak Haven, for six hundred dollars to Merrill Corporation for stormwater regs, for eighty-five dollars and eighty cents to Karen Joseph for mileage reimbursement, for twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents to FedEx for overnight mailing of grant application, for one hundred and twenty-seven dollars to Brad Washburn for reimbursement for parking and transportation to the two thousand and nineteen Nantucket Coastal Conference.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's up, the Nantucket Coastal Conference?
What was that? Do we know?
I know it was a conference, and I know we got some money for, grant money, without too many dollars. That's all I know.
That's all we know. We, we didn't get much detail today.
Okay. All right, liaison reports. Anybody?
Mine was canceled. My meeting was canceled, so.
All right. Ben?
I have to catch up with some of the other people. I've been a little swamped with things, but I will say, not as part of my liaison duties, but in terms of the master plan, I brought stuff last meeting, but next Tuesday is the start, it's the first advisory committee meeting for the master plan, so it's not the full public kickoff, but it's the working group kickoff.
And that's the second, and where is that?
Library, Community Room.
At what time?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Well, we'll be posting, you had indicated last time you wanted that posted as a, as a meeting, so more than three people could go. We'll be posting that tomorrow.
Okay, excellent.
I'm hoping to be there. I have to be in New York City in the morning. I might be back, so we'll see.
I'll be there, Ben will be there. Will you be there?
I'll be there, yep.
Will you be there?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's see. Traffic rules, anything? No? Okay. ADC is working with Morse Situate, trying to get a few things squared away up there. Still talking about the fire hydrant on Country Way, which does not operate, and so Kevin Cafferty, or somebody was supposed to talk to Wilder Brothers and see about moving that fire hydrant across the street, because it's been like that for two years. We'll see what happens. And if, if we try to connect it, then the T would shut everything down, and we don't want to do that. So, CPC had a ribbon cutting this morning to start for the fields. I did not attend, you know, out here, little fields. And that's about all I know.
Looks like the dog park's just about done, huh?
Dog park and.
Phase one of the, phase one of the dog park. The dog park is going to be done in two phases.
The small dogs will be later.
Small, Phase One's nearly done. Small, phase one's nearly done.
Is there more clearing, or is just that they haven't constructed the small dog park?
It's into phase because of the monetary situation.
Yeah, I guess.
I don't, I haven't looked at the plans recently.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, no problem. Not important.
I think there's probably a little bit more clearing.
Yeah, 'cause wasn't the path in the middle, right?
The path, yeah, right.
So the outside of the clearing is the path, right?
Bigger than I, bigger than I seemed in my head.
Yeah, and it's sort of shocking how big the mulch pile is right next to it.
That looks like it's just gonna go.
Yeah.
And it smells, so I understand. Anything else on liaison reports?
Just a note, I got a note from Kevin Cafferty on the water study.
Yeah.
That they're, they're getting ready to do a kickoff meeting, they're going to pursue putting together an advisory board, but there's no date yet for when that might sort of get kicked off, so, but the contract's been awarded to Teagan Bond, so that's all I know about it at this point.
Planning and development report.
So, well, I attended the pre-construction conference the other day for the track and field, and they're due to start next week with some, with that project. Gunther Tooties, I went out there today, they're hoping to be open next week.
It looks good.
It looks good, the fencing's not in for the air conditioning and the fencing's not in for the dumpster, I don't think that that's fatal, and they didn't put the berm in on the, the Cape Cod berm up on the drive-through side.
Hmm.
Is that something?
But they plan to?
Oh, no, they really don't.
Really?
I said I would bring it up to the board tonight, so, I mean, if you'd like me to make them do it, I will make them do it.
So where is the Cape Cod berm? I'm just trying to visualize this.
I don't know why they didn't do it.
Why? Do we know why?
No, we don't know why. The Cape Cod berm is supposed to be all along here, and they didn't do it. I asked them.
It's along the hill, so to speak.
Yeah, I asked them, you know, what's gonna run the hill and wash it down, and I don't know the answer.
Make them put it in, it's part of the program.
Yeah, they didn't ask to have it removed, right?
Right.
No, they didn't ask to have it removed, so, okay.
They have to do it, those are the rules.
So, that, I mean, I, I would think that you'd want it in before it opens, but otherwise it may not get in.
Well, they probably have to do it because otherwise the drive-throughs, they're never gonna get to it, right?
Well, I will discuss that with him tomorrow.
Yeah.
And, we still remain inundated with projects, does the board want the seniors then to go, to go to design review prior to them coming in on August eighth now?
I would like them to, that's my position, right? I don't, I don't know what.
That's the process.
That's the process.
So what?
I think in particular that the placement of the building on the site feels to me like it's partially blocking out the, the old school. So from an architectural perspective, we didn't get anything that showed us kind of the full, you know, sort of perspective, all we got was, sorry, all we got was the 3D rendering thing that sort of puts the school in the background, you can't really see it, right? So, that's what I'd like to see is, is really what that, what that's gonna look like, you know, from the perspect, it's gonna feel to me like we plopped a building down in front of this other building and they're not connected at all.
All right, well, I did, I will, I mean, and I didn't schedule it ahead of time because theoretically the board is supposed to say what they want the design review committee to look at, so that's why we've been holding off until after the first public hearing. So, placement of the building on-site is a key.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, sort of integration.
Integration.
Site, it doesn't feel like it was designed as a, as a, you know, sort of an updated site plan integrating all the buildings, right? And it felt like, I don't know why they pushed it that way other than maybe to keep it away from the butters, right, but now they put, put this road in here that feels like it's gonna go by the butters' houses all the time, right, all the traffic's gonna go through there, so.
So I will post for design review, I, it's probably going to be July ninth.
Yeah, whatever, whatever it takes, I think. That would be, that would be my vote, is that we ought to have design review.
Feel that way, Joe?
Absolutely.
All right, everybody else?
Yeah, I, I think that's fine as long as we're clear, 'cause I don't want them to like be talking about building facade materials and stuff like that at this point, but I think conceptually, to borrow the term from them.
If they, if they have recommendations for changing, tweaking things on the facade, I'm, I'm okay with that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But they can work it out with the proponent in the meeting, right?
Sure.
They can just report out.
Right.
I guess what I'd say is my, from, in my opinion, the priority, to Steve's point would be, and to borrow the term from the proponents of the project, is to look at the, the design of a campus, if, if we're building a campus.
What campus?
Well, that's a term that's been used, so, I don't know, but that's a term that's been used, so, I want to like think about the design of a campus, what does a campus feel like, where should the buildings go in, given that we have pre-existing buildings, how do we integrate a new major structure into that?
That's the one that doesn't feel to me like it connected, and it's hard to tell on a two-dimensional drawing, that's why it'd probably be good for them to do like the whole length of First Parish there, what's the thing gonna look like, right? And it is gonna be much higher than the houses next to it.
How do you want to say something?
Well, they are starting a building campus program, it's, it's a spin-off of FOSS, and they're taking it from how the library designed, you gotta get money and stuff, they said that at the board of selectmen's meeting.
They're starting a fundraising.
They have fundraising.
For the senior center.
To offset costs and charges and stuff.
That's good, that's fine with me. Yeah, I don't, I don't, that's fine, I just, I'm really talking about more the design of it for the, the next fifty years, right, so, and as Ben mentioned, this sort of campus feel, look and feel, if it's.
So there is a campus, they are talking about this, the senior center is talking about this site as a campus site.
Right.
They incorporate that term in their terminology as a campus.
Yeah, I hear, I hear the words.
Yeah.
I don't see it on paper.
Don't see the design, no.
No.
Is it possible to get some kind of an aerial view of that?
We did get a submission the other night, and because of the workload, we just are downloading it, we got it finally downloaded today, they do have a presentation of how it, they would have shown you tonight, of how it fits into the surrounding neighborhood and some graphics, we will be getting that out to you next week.
Hmm, that would be a good thing to review with the design review committee.
And we will, and I will have that for the design review committee, they intended to show you tonight, but obviously, you know, we're not having the public hearing for, for good reasons.
Yes. Mr. Kelly?
Well, my name is Jerry Kelly, I lived at fifty-six Moreland Road, I'm here in the capacity as a liaison from the advisory committee. When we voted for the senior center and the term campus, we voted not unanimously to support it, but we did vote for it with reservation that we are deciding what to do with the Seawing, the demolition of that and the construction of the new senior center before we decide what we're going to do with the gate school. And it just seemed to be backwards, but the senior center has been so long delayed, we put our reservation aside and voted to support it, but I don't think there is a campus plan yet, and that was our concern.
I appreciate that, I think, I think we've said we support the senior center, it's, you know, the devil's in the details when it gets delivered, this is the first I've ever seen of the, the actual layout, and it feels to me like they wiped out the Seawing, but that's not where they put the senior center, they moved it a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet, you know, going towards the middle of the.
I think that was an accommodation of the neighbors.
Yeah, but then it, then it starts to lose its connection in campus field, right?
Very interesting.
Parking is a visible.
Parking is going to be a huge issue.
Well, I'm hoping we're gonna see a, a full traffic study on this.
Karen, do you want to speak to that full traffic study?
I sent the, I got a price to review the traffic study that we have, and it's down the hall. Whether it comes back approved or not remains to be seen.
Yeah, as, as I said before, I don't know that I'd waste a lot of money on reviewing that, because I think they need to do a more thorough job. I mean, they, they had a fifteen-minute observation as part of the traffic study, that feels to me like that doesn't cut it.
Yeah, and what time of day was it?
Who knows? Doesn't matter if it's fifteen minutes, they missed whatever peaks one way or the other.
If it's fifteen minutes when all the high school kids are going to school, you would see a lot.
Nobody's going to school over there, right?
Not coming down.
That road, that, it's crazy, on that road when everyone's going to school.
Yeah.
When you're trying to get to high, all the kids trying to get to high school.
Yeah.
Line up your damn. That road's crazy anyway.
I mean, I would just say that's. I get the impression that's where they, when they did it.
There are issues. Is there anything else, Karen?
We have, the last item is the continuation of a public meeting on the well seventeen A. Where, I believe Conservation is reviewing the stormwater, and I believe she got something yesterday, I haven't seen anything, but they, we continued it because the planning board likes the drainage, to know what's happening with the drainage before you issue a decision. So I shouldn't, we should know, I think in the next week, how the stormwater stacks up.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public meeting for the site plan administrator review for the municipal water treatment plant well seventeen A, ninety and ninety-six Tech Factory Pond Drive until July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen at eight PM, and continue to tie for action for filing with the town clerk until July thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does it matter that we're ten minutes ahead of schedule?
No.
I don't think they're coming in, do you?
I hope not. It was on the agenda that it was a continuance requested.
I expected them last time and they let me down.
Seriously. All right, is there anything else that we need to talk about?
I'm all set.
All right, I'll entertain Mr. Limbacher's motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.